... Albert Gallowen Area Student Record Order. One thing, God. One thing, God. Father, God, you must be with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Coleman is here, Mr. Mike Denham here, Mr. Howard here, Ms. Franks. Mrs. Moser.
Here.
Mr. Bruski. Mrs. Grubach.
Here.
Ms. Swainy.
Here.
Mr. Paul Dunbar, seven is president.
Thank you. Before we begin public forum, I would just like to remind everyone of our public forum policy, which was adopted October 18, 2017, by each one of the board members up here. I'm just going to go through a little bit of the highlights. In order to permit fair and orderly expression of public comment, the board shall provide an opportunity in each open board meeting for eligible members of the public to comment on matters of concern. Official action is deliberation, which yours, which are or may be before the board prior to official action by the board. There shall be allotted 30 minutes for public comment. In order for the board to have time to conduct the business matters of the district for which the board is responsible, a person may speak one time for a maximum of five minutes during audience recognition. If additional time remains within the 30-minute period allocated for public comment, an individual may after being recognized by the presiding officer, address the board a second time within the 30-minute time constraint. When the 30-minute time period is expired, the presiding officer shall close the period of public participation. When you come up, we would like you to state your name and address, or the name of the group the speaker is representing. Also, in public session, questions asked by the public likely will not be answered immediately, but we refer to the appropriate staff member for a later response to the question. Thank you.
I was on the board in October 2017. I was not part of that, and I think that anybody that wants to speak should have the right to. (APPLAUSE).
So, let's start the public forum after I read what was adopted by the board and its public policy. Who is here for public forum?
My name is Rachel Bernsworth. I live at 352 Hoover Road, Towns, Pennsylvania, and my daughter attends Albert Gallowen North. I addressed the board two months ago with the cut off the teachers' positions, and it's unfortunate that I have to stand in front of the board again and address that we've cut positions and now have teachers working 400 days without a union contract. They have a much higher volume load. Did you know that census school board eliminated a health teacher? Eighth grade students do not have gyms. Middle school has three social studies teachers teaching several weeks of health and life skills in seven topics such as the Civil War and ancient India. By having non-certified teachers teaching health, open the door to eliminating a teacher's job. Fourth graders will not be able to have instruments to share. For half the year band students do not have the opportunity to have a lesson. Again, on the agenda for this evening, there are several coaching positions, several sports positions, that are going to be voted upon, yet our teachers are the ones left blacking. Again, student's education comes first, and these teachers need to come first. The teachers have put their health insurance on the line to save this district money, and each of the positions have been cut to save this district money. It's not getting our children anywhere. I ask the board that you come to ratification to an agreement so these teachers can continue to teach, can do so with proper health insurance, and proper income, and proper resources. Thank you.[320.52][320.52](APPLAUSE).
Who is next for public forum?
Hi, my name is Fred Romensberg. I live at 514 Madison Drive, Smithville, Pennsylvania. My kids, son and daughter, go to Smithfield Elementary, and that's who I'm representing right now. Is Smithfield closing? Why and when is it going to be closing? Reason for the closing, and will this affect the class size? Where will the kids go? The overcrowding of the schools now, is there going to be adequate space in the schools that they are spread out to? Will the fifth grade go to the middle school? Is that a stated decision or school district? Is there a safety concern in doing this, having such young kids in with the older kids at the middle school? Do you have the computer capacity for the additional kids at the middle schools for these kids going there? The bus schedules are already crazy, is that going to mess with that, now they're going to have to go longer drives to and from the school? Will they have their own lunch periods? How will they interact with the other kids, the buses, lunches, et cetera? How many classes, teachers, will they have? Again, you have teachers now with 30-some kids in their class. All these elementary schools are already packed to capacity, now we're going to add even more by spreading them out. Will you have to start earlier lunches? Will they still have recess? And will the districts be realigned because of all this? Thank you.[440.76][440.76](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Marsh. I live at 144 River Street in AWA. I have two children that attend Platteville Elementary School. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the United Mine Workers of America, the Central Allegheny and Fay County Labor Council. I'm also speaking for the German Township District Four as their Democratic Committeeman. And I'm also speaking for George Huck Rattay, the chairman of the Fay County Democratic Party. Hello. My name is Jeff Marsh. I'm a five-year tax pay resident of the Albert Gallowen School District. I'm an 11-year member of the United Mine Workers of America. I am a local union representative, secretary of the Western Area Council of the Coal Miners Political Action Committee. I am a Pennsylvania New York State Compact Delegate. I am currently the German Township District Four Democratic Committeeman. But my most favorite title I carry is a father. I am the father of three wonderful blessings, two of which are students of Platteville Elementary. The teachers and staff at this school are nothing less than extraordinary. The hard-working men and women go above and beyond day in and day out to make sure each student is cared for. I have saw firsthand teachers spending what little they have to make sure students are fed, clothed properly, and have the supplies they need to make learning fun and educational. The men and women should not be treated unfairly. I will not sit back and watch these hard-working men and women not be compensated fairly for their work. I stand here today to let each and every one of you on this board that doesn't support a fair and equal contract for these teachers, counselors, and nurses know that I, plus the hundreds of United Mine Workers of American members that live in the Albert Gallowen School District, George Rattay, chairman of the Fay County Democratic Party, President Darren Kelly, and the over 100,000 members of the Allegheny Fay Central Labor Council, my constituents of German Township, and all of labor will remember each and every one of you on Election Day.[595.24][595.24](APPLAUSE). And to those of you that are on the board that support a fair and equal contract, we will remember you on Election Day also, but in a more positive way. These teachers deserve a fair and equal contract because they are ordinary people doing extraordinary things for the future of our children. Thank you.[624.20][624.20](APPLAUSE).
Is there anyone else?
That's a tough act to follow.
Good evening, folks. My name is Ryan Robinson. I live at 120 Fan House Road, Uniontown, PA. I have two small daughters in Smithville Elementary School. I'm speaking on behalf of, well, when I walked up here, I was speaking on behalf of my daughters, but I'm speaking on behalf of everybody in my family, all my friends, all these folks in red. You know, my initial thought was, Smithville Elementary School, somebody asked Monday if Smithfield was closing. Smithfield is your blue ribbon school. Smithfield does very well on their test scores. I understand budgets. I run a small business. I understand that sometimes you have to crunch things in order to make things work, but closing Smithfield does it. So, I believe that Mr. Page said Monday that there are currently no plans to close Smithfield. So, my question to you is, are there plans to repair the roof at Smithfield? Are there plans to do the repairs at Smithfield, or do we wait long enough that it costs too much to fix, and then it's forced to close? So, that is my initial question. But 400 days without a contract is insanity. It's insanity. I work in the utility industry, and it doesn't, it would never work. It would never work. These teachers, I know, I'm related to some of them, I know a lot of them, but they spend their summers buying things for their classrooms. They don't get reimbursed for that. They worry about our kids like they're their own, and it's an amazing thing, it truly is. We have some of the best teachers that I have ever seen. I have traveled this country, and I have traveled this world, and I am so happy that this is my home, but I am so disappointed by you folks and the history that our Albert Gallowen School Board has done to the teachers, to the community. This is your voters, these are your supporters, and this is the dissension between us now. You guys are under no stress to sign a contract for them, excuse me, no stress, there is no leverage that they have other than showing up in force, and it's absolutely absurd. If the teachers asked me to strike my kids and pull my kids out of school, I would do that in support of them because... So, I ask each and every one of you, you all had a reason for animating the school board, every one of you, the elected officials, why did you come on to the Albert Gallowen School Board? It was to make a change at some point in your life. If you don't feel that you're effective enough to make that change, I ask you to step down.
Anyone else for public forum?
My name is Maggie Wingard. I live at 121 Smiley Road, N. A. W. I am the proud mother of a first grader, A. Wilson, but sadly, this isn't his first time in first grade at A. Wilson because last year's class sizes were so huge. Twenty-nine kids in a tiny little room. He couldn't get what he needed. It's a wonderful teacher that is one of a kind, just like every one of these teachers standing in this room. They deserve better, our children deserve better, my son deserves better. It was no fault of his own, and my son felt like it was all his fault because I had to stand there and sign that paper to redeem my son. It was their fault of his little seven-year-old heart. This is your decision. You're cutting our teachers. You're taking away their survival. Why? Why? Because we don't need football coaches and basketball coaches, baseball coaches. We don't need that. Our kids' future matters. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Hughes. I live at 151 Canickie Road in East Town, Pennsylvania. A lot of you were on the board when I was the principal here. I just want to say, I know I'm only like four days, but I just want to say that a vote against radical miscontracts is a vote against my son over at the high school. So, I'm not a promotional person, so it's a vote against all of our children. It's against the data. There is no educational research, it's a course. Anything that's happened, cut music, no data for that. Cut Health and Gym, no data for that. It has to be about the children and the education, and until it is, like, why are we here? That's what all of these people are about, and you are publicly voting by my peers, my neighbors, to protect that. I just have nothing else to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on. Secretary, enter into executive session and convene.
Madam President, there is a need to enter the executive session.
On that motion, please. Can you make sure your lights are on? You want to come back? All those in favor?
To move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on with secretarial. An executive session was held on Monday, September 16, 2019, from 7:16 PM to 8:22 PM for student confidentiality, collective bargaining, personnel. C, adopt agenda as presented.
I'd like to make the motion to amend, I would like to move to add a line item where we solicit bids to repair the roof roof at Smithfield Elementary Schools. I think, I, as board member, have not been a part of any specific conversation about closing Smithfield Elementary. There have been rumors going on for years. There's students in there now, there's a need to repair the roof. There's no reason not to at least solicit bids to see how much it's going to cost to fix the roof.
Is that what we should, do you want to put it?
You can add it where you wish, but you want to make sure that you're adopting the agenda as amended, and probably it would be best to put it under maintenance B, 10B?
Yes.
If I made, I did have a meeting scheduled with Sam Roberts on Monday, but he canceled the meeting. He got called back to Pittsburgh. He is a gentleman who set up the roofing projects for the high school, AG North, AG South, and it was to have discussion with him in regards to the roof at Smithfield. So, when he reschedules that meeting, I can certainly invite members of the board to participate in that meeting with Mr. Roberts, maintenance, and myself, to discuss his plan for the roof for Smithfield Elementary and what needs to be done.
Mr. Price, is that not something that we need to add to the high score and take formal bids?
Well, if you go out for bid, you first need someone like the roofing specialist to write specifications.
Thank you.
That's Sam Roberts.
So, that we will do that, is that...
Well, I don't, my suggestion to you would be, if you want to add something, is have B read to discuss installation of the new roof with the gentleman, Fran... Sam Roberts. For purposes of presenting specifications to the board to review. Did you get that?
We will present... Discuss installation, we will specify...
Yeah, what the gentleman would do is bring back to you, who is the board, formally vote on the specifications that you would go out for bid. Yes.
So, maintenance is motion carries.
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, approve minutes of the meeting held on August 14, 2019, as presented.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Financial, accept treasurer's report, including tax collections for August 2019, and preliminary financial statements as presented. Second.
We can go on page three.
Yes.
The financial summary shows beginning balance in a general fund of $4,614,562, the receipts for the month of $6,291,479, for a balance of funds for the month of $10,906.042. Our total disbursements for the month are $6,163,551.30, or an ending hook balance of $4,742.49.
Do I have a motion now?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just now that he read the report, just a little information. The delay of real estate taxes for the Albert Gallowen School District. Fairlands Borough, $67,737. George's Township, $298,875.06. German Township, $281,756.06. Mason Town Borough, $108,479.42. Nicholson Township, $114,534.57. Point Marion Borough, $61,039.44. Smithfield Borough, $28,280.98. Spring Hill Township, $125,329.09. This is a total of $185,995.96, which is delaying for the school year 2018 and 2019. That is what money is owed to the Albert Gallowen School District. Mr. Price, I believe you can use six minutes.
Yes, the board is, we're not sure if everyone from the public, particularly everyone here tonight is aware, the school board previously ratified tentative agreements that was met, that were reached with the bargaining team of the AGEA. The AGEA, however, voted it down. Subsequently, a third-party fact-finder appointed by the state of Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board, made a recommendation for a final contract, which the school board accepted. The AGEA did not. Subsequently, that same proposal was again put to the school board, school board voted for it. AGEA, AGEA did not. If the public is interested in knowing what those recommendations were for a contract, you can go to the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board's website under Fact Finders, and it will give a full report that the board voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Okay, moving on. Grant, grant permission to waive the following bill's payroll for September 2019. Bill's utilities, insurance, and contractual obligations paid at the end of the previous month in the amount of $5,63,101.94.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Current month general fund bills in the amount of $1,584,598.27.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Accept activity account reports as presented by building principals.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Adopt resolution is presented to designate Piper Jaffray Company as the purchasers of the bonds being used to refinance and refund the Fay County Career and Technical Institutes, school lease revenue bonds, series of 2012 issued by the Fay County Vocational Technical School Authority. The original debt resolution was previously approved by the Albert Gallowen Area School Board on October 19, 2016.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint Vince Velzic as the alternate representative to Southwest Regional Tax Bureau, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant permission to increase the substitute cafeteria hourly rate to non-dollars.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Correspondence?
I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone that participated in the kickoff school year event out at the Hayside Stadium prior to the football game on August 30. It was great to see everybody out and enjoying a nice evening and playing with the first win of the year. I'd also like to thank everyone, all the parents and guardians that attended the curriculum, the meeting, teacher sessions held after late of age, second week of school. So, thanks to all of you for being there, being a part of Albert Gallowen.
Thank you. Solicitors, your board?
I only did have one eye as Madam President. When we went into executive session this evening, besides personnel, we also discussed a security issue brought to our attention by Chief Pylecky and Director Gordon.
Thank you. Curriculum and instructions. Approved first reading of updated policy 610, purchases subject to bid quotation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel, accept the resignation of Angela Oakley, cafeteria employee effective August 16, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Award Audra Kenny 4.5-hour cafeteria position at AG High School according to contract.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Award Tina Machoski 4-hour cafeteria position at AG High School according to contract.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to do this with my group. Hire the following elementary tutors for once in a year only, compensation equivalent to step one of teacher salary schedule with benefits. Emery Durda, A. Wilson Elementary. Laura Chapman, Smithfield Elementary School. Carol Wetzel, George Day Flaba Elementary. Brenda Cousins, Friendship Hill Elementary. Christine Spall, Mose Mason Elementary.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant Diana Black, learning support instructor, a leave of absence from August 19, 2019 to October 31, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant Sherry Dugan, cafeteria employee, a leave of absence from August 26, 2019 to approximately September 26, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant Annie Cutec, a leave of absence from February 24, 2020 to approximately June 4, 2020. A pure sick and personal day shall be used during leave as permitted by the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hire the following elementary home... Hire the following elementary hall monitor. Raji Lewis, Smithfield Elementary, retroactive August 26th, 2019. Pamela Dodson, Friendship Hill, retroactive August 28th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We need to hire the study in AG South Middle School, midnight shift according to contract.
I'm making a motion for Harry Carson.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resent the motion to hire Michelle Valsega as high school hall monitor.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Transfer Bruce Huesman from head middle school soccer coach to assistant high school boy soccer coach for the 2019-2020 season.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Opposed. And I just to preface, with these paid sports positions, I will be voting no, it has nothing to do with the specific individual. But when we have a situation where we have 30-plus kids in elementary school classes, where we have ropes in schools that haven't been fixed, something has to change about the way we're doing business.
Thank you for food for thought. We could eliminate all extracurricular activities.
We're not.
Are we going to be quiet so we can?
And people, what, don't disrupt the public opinion. Okay?
Yes.
I wonder if it were your students behaving like this in the cafeteria or in your classroom. Whether you agree or not, think about what you expect of your students behaving. Thank you.
I believe again, transfer Bruce Huesman from head middle school soccer coach to assistant high school boy soccer coach for the 2019-2020 season. I believe Mrs. Charity Bruegel is the one is voting no. And Mrs. Major?
I believe it will still pass.
Five-two. Motion carries. Transfer Krista Bishop from volunteer middle school soccer coach to middle school co-head soccer coach for the 2019-2020 season.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One-two.
Five-two. Motion carries. Ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Albergalton School District and the security police, fire professionals of America, local 502 for a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2019, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Award Matthew Stackhouse, high school extracurricular activity sophomore class sponsor for the 2019-2020 school year.
Is this a paid position?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Five-two. Motion carries. Hire Alexis McGlocklin as a three-hour cafeteria employee at AG High School according to contract.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hire Sabrina Fishburne as a three-hour cafeteria employee at AO Wilson according to contract.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resent the motion to award Allison Carey as an extracurricular middle school local music director.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is. Accept the resignation of A.D. Purple Listky, principal effective on Thursday, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose your motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant permission to eliminate a two-hour cafeteria position at Smithfield Elementary.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant permission to create a two-hour floating cafeteria position based at Smithfield Elementary.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Grant permission to reinstate the middle school athletic director position.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Wait, 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 wait. Motion does not carry.
We need five. Award renewed the following high school coaches for the 2019-2020 season, pending receipt of all proper documents. And I will do this with my group. Jacob Maburka, Jordan Alderson, assistant boys basketball. Sarah Larkin, Bill Louie, assistant girls basketball. Mike Simon, assistant wrestling. Jared Shaw, volunteer assistant wrestling. Mike Reback, head ninth grade boys basketball. Jeff Copus, assistant ninth grade boys basketball. James Hershberger, assistant girls softball. Rick Turzer, volunteer assistant girls softball. Joe Barton, Eric Forsythe, assistant boys baseball. Russell Zinska, Andy Miles, assistant track. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second. I'll second, but I have to stay on.
Well, I would say all those in favor? Aye. And all the group.
I'm opposing except for the two volunteer coaches.
Same, I'm opposing except for the two volunteers.
Okay.
Aren't those these, are teachers?
There are some listed teachers.
I'm saying, I'm saying. I'm standing for number one. George Alderson. Is that? Okay, wait, wait. Jacob McGarretto fails. No. Jordan Alderson failed. Jacob McGarretto doesn't pass.
Do you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay. Award renewed the following middle school coaches for the 2019-2020 season, pending receipt of all proper documents. Bailey Powell, head volleyball. Kristen Dunham, assistant volleyball. Bethany Kern, head girls softball. Stephanie Smircheck, assistant track. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I have to stay for number two. Marshall.
Opposed. Two will not pass.
Two does not pass. Kristen.
Accept the resignation of George Borger, hard times security effective September 17th, 2019.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Administrator, grant permission to add the following substitutes, pending receipt of all proper documents. Non-professional Karen Burgess, Dragan Austin. Professional Laura Hall.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AO Wilson cafeteria to scout BSA from September 18th, 2019 through May 2020. From 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for meetings, the contact person being Lisa Mark.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AO Wilson cafeteria to Tiger Dem Pack 609 from August 28th, 2019 through May 27th, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for meetings, the contact person being Cheryl Ball.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AG High School library to Trio Upper Bound from October 1st, 2019 through May 5th, 2020, from 2:15 p.m. to 4:15 p.m. for tutoring sessions. The contact people being Jennifer Ramsey and Erin McNamara.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AG North Cafeteria and Gym to AG Middle School cheer boosters on November 15th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for dance, the contact person being Lori Burke.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AG South Cafeteria and Gym to AG South 8th Grade Formal Committee on September 27th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for a dance, the contact person being Jennifer Ball.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AG South Cafeteria and Gym to AG South 8th Grade Formal Committee on October 25th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for dance. The contact person being Jennifer Ball.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant use of AG South Cafeteria and Gym to AG South 8th Grade Formal Committee on May 15th, 2020, from 4:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for 8th Grade Semi Formal Dance, contact person being Jennifer Ball.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approve the following WVU student nurses for clinicals at various times throughout the district, pending receipt of clearances. Alyssa Connel, Alan Lynn, Alyssa Warden and Rachel Wyler.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant permission to the junior ROTC to participate in the Steven Silver Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk in New York City on September 29th, 2019, which requests the use of two school bands, LTC Walsh, SFC Harmon and Two Chaperones, and no cost to the district.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant approval to add Tony Zortman, bus driver, Bus 41, to 2019-2020 Bus Drive Northwest.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Maintenance, grant permission to purchase interior mix and install services from Thomas' ProTurf Incorporated in the amount of $3,950 for softball field.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. B?
Let me read that.
Yes, please, Mr. Price.
Authorize administration to have roof replacement specifications for Smithfield Elementary School drafted for review by the board.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I would suggest you have the vendor come to the work session for you to make this question. I would like permission from the board, I would have a request from private industry council, to purchase cafeteria tables that we have that are in storage here at Deepberg Swainy at a cost of $1,000 for all three tables. They did reach out and ask if they could purchase tables for their pick program in Uniontown. So, with your permission, I would like to speak to them about the sale of those three tables.
So moved. In favor, last? A second, you need a second. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll write it back at first. Okay. The next month of the meeting will be held on September 16th, 2019, at Deepberg's食堂 Cafeteria. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll see you in October.